You're echoing, so yeah.
Everybody are quiet.
Oh, no. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the zoning board meeting of April tenth, two thousand eighteen. My name is Mike Kevias. I am the vice chair and I'll be conducting the meeting today. Board members, Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Chin, Mr. Frankel, no, Mr. Himmel. Sorry, Mr. Frankel, he's not here, and Mr. Raybell. Clerk was Murphy and behind us is the director of inspection services, Jay Dooker. If you have a cell phone, if you turn it off so it doesn't ring in the middle of the meeting, that would be nice. If you want to speak to one another, if you could do it out there because it's hard to hear in here, that would be good. And if you're going to testify today, it has to do with under O. If he said you have to stand up. Raise your right hand. And he said, "Do you swear to tell the truth? I hope sure enough to tell the truth to him, he does?"
Yes.
And we hope that they are going to be talking later. Okay, that's good. All right. Can I have a motion to waive the reading of the minutes of the March twenty seventh meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to re-got, yeah, to waive the minutes on the March twenty seventh meeting.
What was the status of the sitting? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, I guess I have. All right, next, we have some requests to continue some cases. In matter number sixteen dash oh eight six, C Street Quincy LLC, Robert Galligan, manager for a variance filing to amend the decisions previously issued in ZDA case number forty-three oh two and case number oh eight zero fifteen, which required a loss of remain common ownership on premises number twelve ninety, I'm sorry, twelve sixty-nine C Street. I have a request to continue the hearing to April twenty fourth. So I guess I made that motion.
You did. I'll second that.
Okay. I'd love to see in that long favor.
Aye.
Okay, I have it. In case number Z eighteen dash four, Allison McClellan for a special purpose variance floodplain findings to construct a non-conform structure on premises number one forty-nine Rockland Street. I make, I'm going to make a motion to continue that to the twenty-fourth of April also.
I'll second that also.
Motion seen. See in that long favor?
Aye.
And then today, Z eighteen dash five, Edward Page for variance to convert the existing single-family home into three one-bedroom residential units by raising the roof to create a third floor construction and rear addition on premises number thirty, Anderson Park. I request to continue the case till May, May eighth.
Second.
I'm looking to see in that long favor?
Aye.
I have it. So if you're here for any of those cases, folks, we're not going to hear them today. We're going to go a little bit out of order here on the O, of the O business. Case number eighteen dash fourteen, Daniel Salucci for a variance to construct a two-family addition on the premises number one oh five Ridley Street Quincy. Is the applicant or their representative here?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Few members of the board. My name is Paul Hernandez and I represent Mr. Salucci. Mr. Salucci is the owner of one oh five, uh, Grilla, Grilla Street. He's not asking to do two family. It's a one-family. He wants to remain a one-family. What he's trying to do is put an addition on. The addition will consist of another bedroom, another bathroom, master ba- bathroom. What you have here, the variance he's seeking is this, the, it's two and a half floors is allowed. He has to go three floors. And why he will go three floors, because of the slope of the land right there. In order to have the new addition the same height as the old addition, I'm sorry, as the, as the same house right now, he's going to have to raise it up. So we're asking for the variance to allow him to go from two and a half floors to three floors in order to make the addition the same height as the present house right now. This is, nothing else is changing. The lot presently is fifty-five hundred thirty-eight square feet. It still will remain that way. The setbacks will remain that way. Everything remains the same way it is. This is the man who lives there with his family. His family needs a three-bedroom. It's a two-bedroom now. They want to remain there. They want a two, two or three bedroom. But again, in order to have the addition there and have a master bedroom, a master bathroom, they would have to put the addition on the back, right here. Right now, it's a bedroom here and here. This bedroom now will extend to this bedroom. There will be another bedroom here. There is, and the other thing that will be happening is a bathroom and a family room. That's the only thing they're seeking. Again, the variance is just for the height. It's the two and a half, then you can see here it's two and a half floors. Here, it'll be three floors. It's going to be equal. And so it's, so it will remain a one-family home. The hardship is the fact of the slope of the land. In order to make it one home, otherwise you'd have this much lower. And it, it just wouldn't look something that would be appealing and also for the family's sake. So there is a hardship, but again, all we're speaking of is about letting, we'll go up half a, half a story, even at all off. There will be no other entrance as far as, one of the things I spoke about, possibly been lost, that's nonexistent. All we're talking about is a bedroom, a kitchen, I'm sorry, a bedroom, a bathroom, no kitchen, and no bathroom. And the one exists. If you see on the old drawing, it's a deck. It's actually covering that area. We're saying it's not going to be detrimental. I spoke to the board counselor. We went to look at the view, grant the motion. He had no issue with it. In fact, he knows the family. He thinks it's good for the family. They want to stay there. They're raising their family. So we're asking for a variance for a lot for the height. Go from two and a half to three in the background of the house.
Any questions for the board?
None for me, it doesn't.
Nothing?
No.
You having to take out a lot of the trees in the back or is a lot of removal or just a little?
Four trees.
Okay.
Three and a half ones sort of rotted down a bit. They probably wanted to come down either way.
Yeah, yeah.
Sort of leaning, sort of leaning towards.
Looked like it was leaning in, that's what it is.
Okay. Have a seat. Does anyone want to speak in favor of the project? Favor, once, twice, three times, for that part of the hearing closed? Nothing from DPW or anything? Okay, anyone want to speak opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided, once, twice, three times, for that part of the hearing closed? I think it's a fine project.
Yeah, I agree. It's making little bull and matching with the slope.
I see.
Agreed as well.
What's next? I must have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, regarding case number Z eighteen dash fourteen, Daniel Salucci for a variance to construct a two-story addition on the premises number one oh five Ridley Street. I'd like to make a motion to grant the request of variance.
Second. I'd love to see in that long favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, through you, members of the board, thank you very much. Thank you for taking me out of order. I really appreciate it.
That's very.
Thank you.
Next, on the O business, a Z eighteen dash one, Simon Lamb for variance to convert the two-family home to a three-family home on the premises number one seventy-two Vassal Street. Is the applicant or their representative here?
Yes.
Sure.
Hi, how are you? Can you say your name and address for the rally? My name is Ray Zhang Jing. My name is, uh, seven two, uh, so she proceed. My name is Simon Lamb, eighteen, what's over here.
So last time you were here, you were talking to us about, there was already a three fami- it's already a three family removal. And we talked about, I believe, before you helped me out, that we were concerned about the plot.
Yes. Yes, and, uh, Mr. Duke came to the property and he saw the, the back and the, and the way we proposed to fix the problem. That, um, it was looking existing.
Yep.
They were hoping to, um, hoping to, uh, have landscaping back so we can accommodate the two cars. So we could probably have the six parking to solve that problem. I, I believe everyone has a drawer. Uh, yes. Check the landscaping. Yeah, check the, then put the landscaping back a couple feet so we can accommodate two cars. So each unit will have a set parking, uh, one, two, and three. So if they had to move the car, they can keep one, their unit, and not bother the other tenants.
Should we use the tenants on?
Yes.
The garage can use now?
Yes, it's used. And because this is on, uh, this is actually higher grade. This is a retaining wall. So bring the retaining wall back from the original. Bring that back so we can accommodate the two cars.
Is it going to be asphalt or are you going to have?
Asphalt, yeah.
Impervious?
Yeah, because they bring the landscaping, uh, retain wall back to the repaved driveway. And keep that area for six hours. For the.
Any chance of putting some impervious, uh,
Pervious.
Pervious, I'm sorry, is it pervious then? Pervious, uh, material on the driveway?
Um, what would, what's pervious?
With a lot of water flowing through as opposed to having it hot surface and then you have immediate water runoff issue?
It could be often, yes. Like, put a drain, you mean to put like, uh, like a, is there a drain?
Doesn't have to be a drain.
Like pavers instead of asphalt.
That's the one.
Okay, yeah, I think, uh, some top, top. Yeah, yeah, no, no problem there.
So on which, you know, which part of those pay would be, you have six spaces?
Um, Yeah, just put that part right there because this is already paved already. And when we move that back, we can make that into a, uh, or the gravel.
And how, how far back will this go? Well, you've got a couple of steps here on that wall. How far back are you going to take that so that we can move around? Is that six feet? Is it nine feet?
I believe it's, uh, I believe right now. We're going to have to take it back until it comes twenty-two feet, until it can accommodate two cars. I believe it's like six, six feet or eight feet from it.
Six, seven?
Yeah.
Is that seven spaces total?
Yeah, they, they don't consider that space.
Oh, no?
Uh, we are. Twenty-two, what's here?
So it's twenty-two feet from the house to that corner. So how many feet will it be?
Uh,
Between, because they're going to take this up and they're going to move it that way to make the area to move a car, right?
No, this is, you're just going to get this. Why are they, you're not touching it here?
No, he's going to, you're going to move this back a little bit.
Not, not exactly sure, but it's, uh, it's probably like five feet. Why would you move this back? Would you like to be moved back a little more? Is that what you want?
So you're saying this is, this is where it would stop, right?
Yes, where it would stop, yeah.
Yeah, this is what he's done.
This is like a retaining wall.
Okay, so you have two spots here.
Okay.
Because you can get it in out of here.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we can bring it back a little more if it doesn't.
Well, I mean, it's twenty-two, uh, what's an average cap? Seven feet wide?
Space is number eighteen.
Yeah.
Any other questions? You must be telling it.
I'll, I'll just let them make a call. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Marty asked me to go by and look at this last time as well. Uh, this is a house that has already an existing space up in the attic. It was built like that. It's got non-compliant stairs that go up and it lends itself to being an additional unit. So I looked at it as an opportunity to make it safe. If the board does in fact decide to grant the variance, uh, it does have parking on, on the, I would ask that they put a condition on it, um, for parking plan, a better plan, uh, with landscaping, um, and some kind of drainage or pavers that can be reviewed by our engineering department and approved before we issue a permit. You should also know that because it's going from a two-family to a three-family, that's going to require a sprinkler system and a full fire alarm system. The stairs are non-compliant. They're, those will also be rebuilt and we can handle all that in-house should you decide to grant the variance. Thank you.
So if we're going to pass it, you'd like to see a parking plan and a landscaping plan?
Uh, I'm going to require, uh, full architectural floor plans. So with that parking plan, site plan, landscaping, everything that comes with it, we will permit the whole package. Something better, this is conceptual, so any other concerns you want to make and make a condition of it, we'll make sure that that gets in.
Okay.
Mr. Duke, we have the building plans on all the topics we're talking about.
Yeah.
Except for the fix. Yeah, and we do have a sprinkler plan also in there to make it up to as best as possible to hold.
Thank you. Have a seat. Does anybody want to speak in favor of the project?
Just a reminder, I think you guys said it the last time, but I just want to make sure. So you, this is, you recently purchased this, not too long ago, right?
Yes.
And it was advertised as a three-family, is that what it was?
I'm not sure, but, um, I think, because the owners don't speak much English. So he, so when he looked at the house, he probably thought it was three-family.
Do you know when the work was done?
No clue. I think the prior.
This, this house is basically, the stairs, everything is built with ours.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone want to speak in favor of the project? Once, twice, three times, for that part of the hearing closed?
No.
No correspondence. Anybody opposed or undecided? Anybody who wants to speak that's opposed or undecided. Once, twice, three times, for that part of the hearing closed? Um, I think that the idea of making this a safer place by getting it up to code would be good. And having a parking plan, um, submitted, the landscaping will also be good. So I don't think.
Okay, so the one issue that we had before was that neighbor behind.
Yes.
Was concerned about the guy, about the guy that's been taken care of.
So I'm taking it down, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, with that, I'll, I'll agree with Jay that whatever he wants to have done there, we'll go by and I'll be going in favor.
Likewise.
As well.
Can you make a motion, sir?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, regarding case number Z eighteen dash one, Simon Lamb for a variance to convert the two-family home to a three-family home on premises number one seventy-two Vassal Street. I'd like to make a motion to grant the variance subject to, um, inspectional services approval of pavers instead of, um, impervious areas in the new pocket areas, a landscaping plan, and a sprinkler system, and a parking plan to be filed on line. And architectural drawings, I'll be by the chair.
Any questions?
Give review, uh, engineering review of, um, the three-inch.
They submitted comments previously.
Okay, okay. All right, second. A motion seen in that long favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You all set? Thank you. And coming on to new business, a Z eighteen dash fifteen, Joseph Dwyer, trustee for a variance filing to demolish the existing two-family and construct three duplex townhouse buildings, six units, on the premises number three thirty-nine Quarry Street. Is the applicant or their representative here? State your name for the record.
Mr. Chairman, good evening. Christopher Harrington. My law office is at twenty-one McGrath Highway. And I represent Joseph Dwyer and Brian Murphy, who are the owners of this property. Mr. Murphy and Mr. Dwyer, seated right here in this row behind me. Also with them is Devin Riley-Marini, who is our architect from Chu and Company, and she'll be speaking in just a minute. Uh, this is a project at three thirty-nine to three forty-one Quarry Street. Uh, this is a, a pre-existing non-conforming two-family house that's on this property. House was built in nineteen hundred. It's very old. Uh, it's a, it's a, it's well-maintained, but it's an old structure with old, old framing, old utilities, old insulation, old windows and everything else, and it really needs to be torn down and upgraded. Uh, my client is proposing to tear this house down and to replace it with three duplex buildings on the site. This property is eighteen, over eighteen thousand square feet. It runs, it runs behind the property. It's located right next to it. And it takes up this entire area and through here. I have a couple of photographs to show you. I apologize, I don't have multiple copies of them.
Hold that against you, Chris.
This proposal is to build six townhouses in three separate duplex units. Each unit is approximately fifteen hundred square feet of living space, two bedrooms, two full bathrooms, and half baths on the, as well, on the first and second floor. Uh, we are here this evening for you first. Normally, I know the city prefers to have these projects go to a planning board before they come to the zoning board for action from you. In this case, um, this project needs some variances, which if you choose not to grant them, um, then there's really no point in going through the site plan review process at the planning board and all the work that's entailed in getting through that process. So we met with, um, Mr. Duke and with Jim Fatsias, and they agreed that the best thing was, for this project anyway, to come here first, resolve the variance issues, and then go through site plan review. So at the moment, the plans that you have show how the site will be developed. It does not show, um, it doesn't show the stormwater management system, which will be engineered and put on the plan for the site plan review process, and also go through the peer, the peer review process. Uh, this property has the trifecta of conditions for granting a variance, soil conditions, shape, and topography. Uh, there's ledge on the property. It's clearly an unusual shape. And the topography changes from a high of a hundred and thirty-one feet to a low of a hundred and twelve at, at the street. So it's a twenty-two-foot change in elevation from the rear of the property to the front. So clearly, it meets the requirements of a variance of soil conditions, shape, and topography. Also, this property is all, is already a non-conforming two-family house on, on this location. Uh, looking at the photographs, you can see that to the left is a pair of townhouses that are very similar to what we're proposing to build here. Uh, to the right is a repair shop. And, uh, we think that a reasonably sized, um, section of development fits well on this property, on, on this specific location, with the townhouses to the left and the, and the business property to the right. And also behind us is High Point, which is about a thousand units of multi-family development in the, in the PUD zone. I'd like to introduce Devin Riley-Marini to talk about, um, the plans that she's drawing for the project and what the buildings will look like. Thank you.
The site plan. And then, uh, each unit has a garage on the first floor. It can fit one car. And then there's also room, if the, uh, site work is done correctly, to have twelve spots on the outside. There's only requirement of twelve spots, so we have eighteen, which is six extra than we would need. So based on site work, we can probably treat that based on how we need it. Uh, the idea is to put pavers for drainage where the parking would go. On the bottom floor, there's the, the garage and then study room, and then go up and very open living. And upstairs, you have two bedrooms with two full baths. Mechanical in each of the unit, washer and dryer in each of the unit. This would be just a quick elevation of what it could look like. Hardened plant on the outside, some sort of fiber cementing build up for the corners. Give it a nice traditional look if we can. Set back, maybe a change in material between the front facade and let's back to show some sort of depth. Hopefully brick or some sort of nice stone on the bottom. Corey sheet, of course. The other one just looks slightly different because of the possible change in grade. So this one, the floor plan would have the second means of egress come out more up here than at their backyard in that area. Then when the first one doesn't have that change, where their other exterior doors right up the back.
Mr. Chairman, one of the final elements of this project is that, um, my, my clients, um, have been operating a sober house at this location since two thousand and nine. Um, they are one of the responsible sober home owners in the city of Quincy and were actually behind the city's efforts to put regulations in place, most over houses and occupancy and rules and, and things like that. Um, so this, this property has been used as a sober house since they purchased it in two thousand and nine. Uh, what we're looking to do to redevelop this is that the, the property has significant value as a two-family. It's assessed at five hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Um, it has significant value to, uh, someone who wants to own the sober house and buy and operate an existing sober house. Uh, our plan is to, is to change this, to take that down into redevelopment into something different. Uh, and based on the value of what's there right now, uh, it really would take a project like this, you know, a six-unit project, to be able to justify tearing the house down, closing up the use that's on the property right now, and turning it into something different. We have, um, my clients reached out to their immediate abus on Quarry Street. We have letters of support from the owner of the garage that's on the right-hand side of the property, and also letters of support from the owners of two townhouses that are located on the left-hand side of the property. So that's our presentation. We're happy to answer any questions if you have.
Counselor, is it, is the sober house, is it still going to be a sober house or is that?
No, it usually, usually six condominiums, four sale condominiums.
Thank you.
Yes.
Question for counsel, what's behind the property right here? Uh, High Point. The High, the High Point development, I think the, um, maybe the parking garage, there's a parking garage behind here. And it's about, uh, it's about, well, I think High Point was permitted for a thousand units. I think it was nine hundred units, multi-family housing up there right now. Is there much runoff of water from that area down to this particular? Do you get a lot of runoff from High Point in bad storms?
No. I think not manageable. I mean, we have some, you know, we get some water. It's going to need some attention.
It's flagged on, uh, foundation and it's a very old building, but for the most part, unless you had, you know, some substantial weather, we, we don't really get a lot.
You'll be engineering everything anyway. That's right, but the engineered site plan is going to have to go through the outside period here, more than.
How much of the ledges are going to have to be removed behind it to wear them?
We're, um, we're looking at having, having to cut out this corner of the ledge right here in order to get the building in as it's designed. It could, it could change slightly. That's one of the issues that might come up during the peer review process with the planning board. They might, um, you know, they, they might, they might suggest, you know, possibly sliding this building over and setting up the trap, setting up the pocket a little bit differently, um, so that there isn't as much ledge removal. So that, that could change slightly, but it's, um, it's not going to change. It's, it's not going to be anything but six units and it's, it'll have twelve parking spaces. Just a question of whether it has twelve parking spaces or eighteen spaces, and it might change slightly where they are.
But, could that change anything?
Would it be weak for blessing?
I, at this point, I'm not certain. Uh, I got a permit for a building on, um, Granite Street that is going to be blasted, the one that's across the street from Star Market.
Yes.
They are going to blast there. They originally said that they would do their best to not blast, to try to remove the stone by chipping it. And, um, every expert they talked to said that that was crazy. And it's, it's, it's just, it's faster, it's easier, and it's less disruptive to just blast it because they just get it over with so much faster than to try to chip it up. So I, I don't know if they're going to blast that. I imagine they will try to chip it if they can. You're playing with.
They did have, you did have to move it. That wouldn't have elicited anything from us, even, it wouldn't have. We just approved in the number of units.
No, it wouldn't, it wouldn't change, it wouldn't, it won't change any of the dimensions, the variances that we've asked for. Thank you.
Does anybody want to speak in favor of the project? Once, twice, three times, for that part of the hearing closed? No correspondence. I have a letter from the DPW. We review the similarity above the previous project and our comments are as follows. One, specify how much impervious area will be increased due to, due to development. Provide plans showing its existing site conditions, layout, utility, drainage, drainage, and the construction details. Explain how the surface runoff will be discharged and treated. Install survey monument to illuminate the public right of way. The monuments shall be set by a professional land surveyor. Provide dimension. Provide dimensions and grades for the paving area and all driveway entrances. Upon completion of the project, add bill plans showing all utilities, building footprints, reference, bounds and benchmarks defining the total site facilities right-of-way to be submitted along with additional file. They add bill, adds bill plans, most of these stamped and signed by a professional land surveyor or professional engineer. They also have three letters from, um, one from three forty-three Quarry Street, unit A, one from the, uh, unit B, and one from three thirty-three Quarry Streets. They don't need their names, but they say as follows, dear center, to the Quincy's only Board of Appeals. I am a direct abut for Mr. Dwyer and Mr. Murphy's property at three thirty-nine three Hollywood Quarry Street. I review the plans of the proposed project and full support of their project. All right. Anybody opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided, once, twice, three times before that part is here and closed? Well, I think that the neighborhood is certainly changing and, uh, these townhouses kind of fit in with everything else I think of the Quarry Street. We've seen a lot of development over the years. Uh, I know a lot of people were upset and worried about the High Point many years ago, but, uh, we're still here.
I sat on those meetings. Too far.
So.
Before our time.
Yes, uh, so I'm in favor of the project.
I'm likewise in favor.
I think it's gonna be a good improvement, I'm in favor.
As well.
The location, good use of land, thank you for additional parking spots, you don't see that often up here, so, uh, appreciate it.
Make a motion, sir.
Mr. Chairman, we got in case number Z dash eight, Z eighteen dash fifteen Joseph Dwyer trustee for a variance finding to demolish the existing two-family and construct three duplex townhouse buildings, six units on the premises. Number three thirty-nine Quarry Street Quincy. I'd like to make a motion to grant the requested variance and finding, subject to the Department of Public Works conditions and approved by the planning board.
Yes.
Second.
Second. Motion seen on all favor?
Aye.
I just have it. Thank you.
Good luck.
Day one.
Best motion of the day.
We got some extensions. So you could do this one, I could have that one tied up.
The matter of one fifty-one Granite Street, also known as three dash thirteen Quarry Street, fifty dash twenty-one Quarry Street, placed by, uh, seven fifty Publican LLC. Case number sixteen dash oh four two, they're asking for a one-year extension of a special permit, special permits last three years? Three years.
That was the project he was referring to, right, Chris?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
When they're blasting.
Yeah.
Yes, right.
Have a blast, wait it out.
Let it all fade.
I'm good.
Make a motion, sir.
I'm not going through that process again.
Mr. Chairman, we got.
That one moved.
Oh, did she? Okay.
They took care of her. Uh, Mr. Chairman, regarding an extension to case number sixteen dash oh four two. I'd like to make a motion to grant the requested extension.
Second.
Second.
I look at seeing if you're not all favor?
Aye.
I just have it.
Has one for Town Hill Street?
Those streets.
It's, um, up on the thirteenth.
Oh, okay, so this is, uh.
That's the actual.
This is six months?
Six months, yep, this is six months.
This is a six-month extension, I don't have the case number, that's okay, don't hear it.
It's right here.
Oh, Jesus, it's the size of my head almost.
That doesn't sound right.
They left this up over for that. Thank you.
Marty's ego?
The case seventeen dash twenty-two thirty-six Town Hill Street, uh, they're asking for a six-month extension.
Mr. Chairman, we got in case Z seventeen dash twenty-two, dirty townhouse, to make a motion to grant the requested six-month extension. Second.
A motion seen on all favor?
Aye.
We just have it.
Thank you.
And we have another one here, six-month extension. This is case number sixteen dash oh five nine, fifty-seven Quincy Short Drive. Uh, they're making a motion to, uh, six-month extension on this.
Mr. Chairman, regarding case sixteen oh five nine, uh, fifty-seven Quincy Short Drive, I'd like to make a motion to grant a six-month extension. Second.
A motion seen on all favor?
Aye.
One last one?
And last one. Z seventeen dash thirty-nine. Clark, twenty-two Clark Street. Uh, there is. Yep. Question is this one, six months.
Mr. Chairman, regarding case Z dash seventeen dash thirty-nine twenty-two Clark Street, make a, uh, motion to grant the six-month extension. Second.
A motion seen on all favor?
Aye.
I just have it.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Chairman, I can make a motion to adjourn.
What on the table, sir?
Aye.
I just have it, thank you all.